Welcome everyone this evening and I'll call to order this special council meeting here on Tuesday, August the 19th, 2014. And before we begin, thank the Lord for the rain we got last night.
Amen.
And it's much needed after a month of no rain. We've got an agenda tonight that is focused on the budget, several things that we'll talk about. And so without any further delay, I will, I'll move us on into that. This is the first of two public hearings that we're gonna have on the budget. The calendar is posted along with the entire budget on the website. So if you're interested in looking at one of any of the 269 pages that comprise this year's budget, feel free to do that. We also have a hard copy that's posted in the library for anyone that would be interested in going and looking at that. We're gonna go through some highlights of the budget tonight. Mr. Kaiser's gonna give us an overview of some of the numbers associated with that. And before we do that though, what I'd like to do is thank the council for their hard work. Last week, we spent three days in work sessions and just want the citizens of the community to know that you've got a hardworking council that took this job very seriously and we, no kidding, turned all 269 pages and looked at them one at a time to make sure that we understood what was in the budget. And we had some great discussions about the content and the material that's in there. We also started the budget off with, I think, a very important step and that is defining the overarching goals that we wanted to guide the budget. And I would encourage anyone, everyone, to look at the first page of what the budget will be published where there are six goals that are listed there and I think the budget reflects that. First and foremost is to ensure the long-term financial health of our city government. And that's not taking a one-year snapshot of the budget, it's looking long-term. Second is to ensure quality of public safety. Third is to look at infrastructure and the needs for a five-year view of our capital improvement plan. Third is to improve quality of life and appearance of the community through community partnerships. Fourth, or excuse me, fifth is to have an active economic development program to promote development or redevelopment. And then finally, to look at comprehensive planning to provide orderly and sustained development and increase our tax value. So those six areas are really what guided our effort as we went through this fiscal year 2014-2015 budget. And this evening, we'll have an open public hearing. Mark will provide some overviews and then we'll open it up for any public comments on the budget. So with that, I will open the public hearing for discussion on the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget and ask Mr. Kaiser to give us an overview.
Okay, thank you. We did go through, there are many components to the budget document. And before I get into some of those details, let me just kinda just point out and make light that the items that will be voted on separately, that will not be a part of the vote that the council makes when you adopt the budget, but we will vote separately on the tax rate, you will vote separately on the holiday schedule, and we'll vote separately on the fee schedule. So they will not be a part of the vote when you vote on the budget doc, even though it was in the part of the 269 pages. Those will be separate votes. So please, you know, as you're looking through it, again, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that there's gonna be a separation of that discussion if we're necessary. In total, we have prepared a balanced budget. A balanced budget means that we have the money available to meet the obligations that we're willing to commit to at the point in time that you do approve the budget. The total amount of expenditures that are being proposed in this document is $21,751,558. I do have a picture of a hundred dollar bill and I'd like to kinda give an illustration if we could flip over there real quick. Whoever's running the computer for me. I did hand out to each of you council members a copy of the hundred dollar bill too though, and I'll be giving this to the media as a part of our press release. Just as a point of reference, I try to just let everybody understand that if you, you know, a hundred dollars, if you pay a hundred dollars in taxes, whether it be sales tax, property tax, or any other form of taxes, how is that being spent? Through the, the majority of this is all the general governmental functions. Thirty-four percent, little over thirty-four percent is police department, twenty-one, almost twenty-one and a half percent is fire department, twelve point six is general government, nine point four A is streets, four percent is long-term debt. Community development, which is planning inspections and code enforcement, is three point eight-nine percent. Cemetery would be a little over one percent. And then culture and recreation, which is all the community services. So you're talking there about the library, recreation parks, all the recreation programs, as well as Splashville, all are within twelve point nine-six percent of a hundred dollar bill. So hopefully you can maybe see, if you were to break up your hundred dollar bill, here's how at least we have allocated that hundred dollars. So hopefully we give a pictorial view. I wanna point out some of the highlights of those expenditures that we did discuss and are in this document. First of all, this allows us to continue our capital replacement program. The capital replacement program in total of equipment will be the expenditure acquisition. We've budgeted a million thirty-four dollars, a million thirty-four thousand and forty-one dollars for equipment. Let me point out that of those pieces of equipment, two of those we discussed providing and financing on a capital lease program. The ambulance and the landfill compactor are the two that we discussed acquiring, when we acquire those, to acquire them at a capital lease type program. Two of the construction projects or capital improvement programs that I'd like to point out is we have implemented the, put in $250,000 to do a street reconstruction program and then another $250,000 to do water and sewer line replacements throughout the community for this next year. The other item, again, a couple others, just smaller ones, but I wanna go ahead and point them out, is there was a great deal of discussion about Nixle. Nixle is a emergency notification system that automatically occurs. We currently have a volunteer program and we're looking at buying the software that allows us to notify more of our citizens in case of emergencies, as well as it allows us to do some other things beyond just public safety issues. But we're gonna be able to do quite a few more, public announcements, public service announcements. That is $10,000 we have in here. And then one of the big issues that's been discussed quite a bit has been we put $50,000 in for this year to address and work on some of the economic development efforts. The last thing I wanna point out, I guess, that just highlight is pointing out the, we've got $180,000 to do several planning documents, pavement management document, land thrift, land use and thoroughfare plan document. We're talking about doing a waterline infrastructure evaluation as well as updating our long-range water supply plan. So when you put all those planning documents together, hopefully that will be able to help guide us as we begin talking a lot more about our future, future needs as well as future requirements moving forward. Last but not least, I guess, there are many, many, many document, many pages throughout the document, but the one page that I like to always try to highlight to most citizens because I think it's, while this is the expenditure of, if we had your dollar, here's how we're gonna, how we split up your dollar. The net effect and actually what the net operations are, so if you take the revenue we receive versus the expenditure we receive, we actually do an analysis, it's called a statement of activities. It's a page within our budget document that gives you the net effect of each of our programs and there is a specific page and I just wanna encourage people to look at that, as well as, trust me, there's a lot of history throughout that entire document. So with that said, Mayor, hopefully I've encapsulated all that we've talked about and let me just again remind you that the vote that, we will not vote on it tonight, but the vote that will be taken and when it is taken will not include the other separate items that we'll vote on separately. With that, I'll be glad to answer any other questions or talk more about any other details that y'all like to emphasize, I'll be glad to talk some more.
Okay. Well, let me see at this time if there are any, anyone from the public that would like to comment? I didn't, did you receive any? Okay. Is there anybody here?
I don't believe the finance director has nor I have and nor the city secretary, so I'm not aware of any.
All right. Well, and I will remind the public that we will have a second public hearing on September 9th. So, you know, if you wanna take some time and look at the budget and have a specific area of interest that you would like to communicate to the council, we'll be having a second public hearing on September 9th to do that. Let me just then turn to the council and see if there's any comments anyone would like to make.
Mayor, I have a question for Mark.
Okay.
Mark, on page two of our agenda packet, there's probably some simple answer for this, but under three-way, three-month operations at the top, it's $3,350,202. And then ending cash balance at the end of the next fiscal year, $3,123,846. I'm just wondering, which one, which one is three months of operation, 'cause there's about $226,000 difference in those two numbers?
I'm sorry, I'll have to defer to the finance director, but it should be, and I do not have a calculator on me right here, but it should be, the number it needs to be and should be, if you'll take the expenditures of $12,495,385 and multiply that times 25%.
Twelve million how much?
Twelve, four, nine, five, three, eighty-five. Now, again, I'll tell you that what, the number up above includes the eight hundred, I'm gonna say the $825,000 below, that you see right below, that's our capital. So that, when we add our capital expenditures each year, we basically work that out to be 25% of that to allow ourselves that. So that's what ends up, probably why you see it changing.
Yeah, I did the math on it and it's, the bottom figure is 25%, $3,123.
Yeah, okay. And the number above was, I feel certain was, taking the twelve, four, ninety-five, because in your October document, you're gonna get a number, you won't have that section where it says add-back items and debt proceeds, capital improvement, equivalent replacement, new program. You won't have that section in the document come October 1st.
Okay.
And so when you take that out and put that up into that twelve million, four, ninety-five number, whatever, so you're talking about another 800,000, you add that 800,000 up to that number, so what's 25% of the eight twenty-five? That's in essence what happened up in the three-three.
Okay, thank you.
Does that kinda help follow through what's happening? So, you know, that's with capital, with all the capital expenditures from last year is what that amounts to.
Okay.
Okay, any other?
We talked briefly about having Dollar Day at Splashville. How do we get that done? Do we need to vote on it or is anybody in favor of it? Just one day a week, have a Dollar Day for lower-income families?
I mean, these days, wouldn't it? I understood we referred that to the, what committee we call them years, Brady?
Community Services?
I thought that night, we referred it to that committee, but we, that's what I remembered, I'm sorry, but we can, or we'll put it in the fee schedule sometime or?
If we wanna discuss that.
Yeah.
And the, Jerry, if you wanna go into the details of what we were talking about that evening.
Well, the way I remember it, we, I think Doug maybe said something based on a family's income and I thought you got a good reception when you mentioned doing a, one day a week, just Dollar Day.
The discussion that evening was specific to Splashville.
No, Jerry, no.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just asking Brady if he, if anything, only if you understood that, he can use to look at it.
I understand we would just put in the committee, of course, my committee's not met, so that'd be an action item next time the committee met. So I think with Splashville being closed into the week, I mean, I'm thinking somebody probably addressed for sure for next year. I believe correct, in this week Splashville's closing? Mark, is it?
Yes, what starts, it closes unless we have any parties, I'm sorry, we may have a few parties.
So I have plenty of time to work on this issue here, I think it's a good issue to address for sure, but.
I think Jerry, the idea you came up with is a great idea, the Dollar Day kinda thing's a great idea. We could, we could make bid year adjustment on that before it opens back up if it, after the committee looks at it, makes a recommendation how it affects the finances.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's just, for the record, make sure that we note that in the minutes for tonight, that we are gonna look at the fee schedule for Splashville to try to incorporate a Dollar Day for, within the Community Services Committee, as a way for lower-income families to have access without hopefully impacting revenue and a good balance there. So, good, all right. Sharon?
And then I became aware of a problem with our gas, proposed gas allowance, that it needs to be restructured as a reimbursement instead of an allowance, because the allowance will impact pension benefits, taxes and payroll, whereas the reimbursement structure with , where you keep a mileage log and all of that, will not. So that needs to be readjusted in the budget so that it shows up and so that the employees are keeping a mileage log and with a top-out amount per month, a set amount per month.
What he's, what she's referring to is for the direct level positions which were using their vehicles, no reimbursement from the city. And so that was her request and I'll get with you and we've talked, we've talked about that. Does anybody have any trouble changing that?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My concern's gonna be that if these directors start logging miles, it's gonna be a lot more expensive than $3,600.
What Sherri's asked is that we do it with a cap of $300 or did it be reimbursement up to a certain amount of dollars?
I just, you know, I just worry that that's gonna be a hassle for our boys to sit down at the director level and log all their miles for everything they're doing every day. I know they got enough on their plate, so, and I, who brought this up that it's a personnel issue that we can't do it? Did that come from the city administrator?
No, it's a tax issue.
It did not.
No, it did not.
I mean, I'd like to know who's making these recommendations saying that we can't pay an allowance?
We can pay an allowance.
We can't.
Oh, we can pay an allowance?
Well, we can, we can, yes, we can, but if we pay it as an allowance, I talked to several accountants and it has, then it has impacts on the benefits and it will increase those costs. There's also tax implications.
Sure, they take, they take tax out of it. It's like a cellphone allowance, they're gonna take tax out of it.
And we would also pay, pay tax, social security.
Yes, whereas if we just do it straight as a straight reimbursement, it does not impact those other things.
Okay, well, let me, let me recommend, I think we've, we, I don't hear any disagreement on the dollar amount, maybe we just need to refer this as far as how it's gonna be implemented for action.
We will, what I'm hearing is then, and let me just go ahead and make note then, that we will act separately on a mileage or reimbursement policy for the directors and we will act upon it separately from this document.
Right.
The document is a budget that just sets aside.
A dollar figure.
It did not establish that policy completely.
Right, so the action item, like, exactly like you're saying, we now need to have a policy of how to implement.
Would that be Personnel Committee?
Yes, let's refer to the Personnel Committee.
Thank you.
We'd love to talk about this issue in the Personnel.
All right.
I think you would.
Is that okay with you, Sharon?
I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention because of the.
We will act on, before any money's spent, we'll act on that separately.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, that's great. Anything else? Mr. Savin?
I just wanna say thanks to Walt and to Mark about the budget. It was a moving target. Anybody that's, I know the chief over there and the assistant chief have shotguns at targets that are usually standing still, but when people start moving, it's hard to hit the target. And I think that they did a pretty good job of doing that. There was, every time you turned around, we're adding, calculating differently and stuff, I thought the work y'all guys did and everybody else that helped y'all.
Anything else? All right, well then, let me, let me summarize for this evening at least, and I know we'll be talking about this some more, kinda where we're at, and I'll just take, take us back as a council of the goals that we lined out. The long-term financial health, we've got a balanced budget that we're looking at. Provide quality of public safety, we've dedicated 55% of our budget to public safety issues, keeping that as a priority within our community. Sustain infrastructure, we have increased from zero last year to 250,000, a quarter million dollars dedicated to street reconstruction and have preserved the 250,000 that was requested for water and sewer, so there's half a million going toward infrastructure. I'll let you know that the council recognizes that that's, that is an infrastructure investment is not nearly enough and we intend to spend the next year looking at that within our committee structure to better define with the support of the staff what that, what that needs to be in the future. As far as quality of life programs, those were funded as requested by the city staff and so there was no, no decrease in our quality of life programs as far as the services that will be provided. We did look and ask for some efficiencies to take place as far as expenses within some of those accounts and those were looked at. So when Doug was talking about moving target and us asking about the price for a mower or the cost of some materials, those are questions that the council asked and the staff was responsive and so we've, you know, had some adjustments there. We have a commitment to economic development in this budget, $50,000 as a start. We've left that undefined in the budget because we're asking the Planning and Development Committee, beginning tomorrow evening, to tackle the task of how best to utilize those resources. And we recognize that there's some discussions going in the community with possible partnerships and we're, we're interested in looking at those. And then the final item there was the strong comprehensive planning. We have committed to several initiatives to look at water and defining that, look at our street conditions and then the thoroughfare, you know, with the growth in Torleton and the impacts around the community so that we can, we can respond to those ahead of a crisis. So I just wanna thank the council again for your hard work and the staff for your support. This is a very, very comprehensive look at the budget and it comes with a lot of detailed analysis and I just appreciate everybody's work on that. Mayor? Mr. Savin?
Just one other thing, just to mention, you may, you may wanna talk about it in a little more detail. I've had lots of questions and comments from the community about the airport and so if you wanna just mention that, I'm still getting some questions about, are we supporting that expansion?
Well, the question is, are we supporting the expansion of the airport and how many ways can I say yes? The council is fully committed to that project. We understand the importance both from a local business support, whether it's getting teams to tournaments at Torleton or supporting executives coming in to, to support industry here in town as well as other, other traffic. And so the growth of our airport and the expansion, the eight-hundred-foot extension is something that the council is fully supporting and we're excited about that as we, as we move forward with that. So, so thank you for bringing that up, Doug. Okay, with that, if there's no further comments, I will close the public hearing on the budget at this time and consider a motion for us to set a time, date and place for a public hearing on the tax rate, which is on page eight.
I'd like to make a motion that we have the first hearing on September 2nd, 2014, at 5:30 in the City Council chambers here, and the second hearing on September the 9th, 2014, at 5:30 at the same place.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Mr. Wagner, seconded by Mr. Savin, for us to conduct the 2014 tax year proposed tax rate hearings as presented on page eight of our agenda. Any discussion? Okay, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? All right, that motion carries a unanimous vote.
Mayor, just for everyone's benefit, the document that is on page eight will be a quarter-page ad in the newspaper within the next week to 10 days. So that's what everybody will be seeing, the citizen will be seeing. They will not see, and again, we did discuss during our budget deliberations, the worksheet on page nine was an annual publication requirement and it is no longer required to be published. However, it is published on our website, it's the effective tax rate calculation, and it is also available as a, as one of the pages within our budget document. So I do just kinda wanna point that out because it was a change from previous years and just wanted everybody to be aware.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that from Mark? All right, then we'll move on to the agenda item number four, which is consideration of an ordinance to amend the subdivision regulations to provide formal delegation of approval authority responsibilities. And this is the fact that the city has to have an individual by name designated to process replats, amended plats and development plats and so with the departure.
Now, this is administrative, you are signing the documents as well.
Right.
For those that are required, so, this is an administrative signature. You are signing the documents.
So this is designating, the administrative review by the staff had been done by Mrs. Chu and this is recommending that it be delegated now to Mark as the city administrator as an interim authority until that position is replaced.
Only be interim.
Right.
Mayor? Pending any further comments and consideration, I move approval of ordinance number 2014-18. Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDannell, seconded by Mr. Pendleton, to approve ordinance 2014-18, amending subdivision regulations of the city to appoint the city administrator as the interim authority, delegating approval responsible for replats, amended plats and site development plans. Any discussion? Okay, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote, adopting ordinance 2014-18. All right, the next item on the agenda is consider approving a resolution for accepting the 2014 brick street project and, Mark, I'll just let you brief us on that before we go forward.
Thank you, this is, and I know that you've seen these documents, sometimes you see them, sometimes you don't, so I just, I wanna tell you, I'm trying to make it a practice to make sure we do it on, on all of our construction projects especially. And so this is just a matter of record to just let you know that the project is complete. We were within the budget that we originally awarded when we submitted this construction project and, and this is just letting you know that. And then also, obviously, I guess if there's some citizen concern within those neighborhoods that we do construction in the future and or now, that they may have an opportunity to say something and so that's kinda why it's here. Normally these are, I'll tell you, I believe most of the time we have these on a consent agenda, but being the timing of this, we're trying to get, it's a smaller, small contractor who's wanting to get paid, so we, we usually hold that last payment till we do this process. So, but I'm trying to make it, make sure we do this on a very regular basis. You normally see this in the consent agenda, but I'll be glad to answer any other questions. Again, they did great work, the project looks real nice and we, everybody signed off on it last Thursday, I believe, so, you know, that's where we are here, so.
Okay, any questions?
I'll be glad to answer any other questions. I know we had one during the budget work sessions, kind of a, you know, why did we go that far east, if you would? And, you know, the concept has been to try to get as close to the museum grounds as we can because we're trying to call these historical brick streets, but anyway.
Mark, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
They may have been moved since Sunday, but I noticed after having lunch with Jake and Dorothy's on Sunday, on the corner of Divine.
Right.
And East Long, there was considerable pile of bricks there. Have those been moved or whose responsibility is it?
No, that's, I mean, we're taking them back to the warehouse.
Okay, so that wasn't included in the contract? We have to use the city staff to, I mean, the city employees to move the bricks back?
We're the one that, we are responsible for supplying the bricks to fill in those vacant areas or the, those other areas. And so we'll take those back and reuse them on another project. You know, and I believe, you know, as we, for those that had the tour of the university the other day, you're seeing where some of those areas where they're pulling up some of the brick street areas to do some of their pedestrian malls and all of those bricks are being, just for your record and for citizens' record, Torleton's cooperating, they're saving those bricks and we're, we're gonna be reusing them. So I just wanna kinda get that out there. I recognize how precious they are and they're limited. I mean, at the end of the day, when, when we destroy them, that obviously, you know, we're just, they're gonna be limited. So we do save them, we restore them and we keep them for our next project. And so whatever is out there, I'm sorry if they haven't picked it up yet, they did tell me that they were supposed to go pick those up, but all it is, we're just picking up our bricks and putting them back to the warehouse.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mayor?
Mr. Hogan?
I move that we accept resolution number 2014-8, accepting the 2014 Brick Street project.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Hogan, seconded by Mr. Pendleton, with that we accept the 2014 Brick Street project as presented. Any discussion?
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to be, let's just get on the table, everybody's been paid. There's no subcontractors that are without.
It is a small contractor, and they are the subcontractors.
I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote, accepting that project. All right, at this time, I'll call the council into executive session in compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Law, annotated in accordance with 551074 Personnel Matters. Thank you.